My name is Bruce Elliott. I'm the chairman of the zoning commission. For those who haven't been here before, our main business tonight is there's two public hearings. And before we get to that, we need to do some sort of housekeeping stuff. Attendance and minutes.
Can you talk louder, please?
I can talk a little bit louder, but I don't talk very loud, so there isn't a whole lot I can do. There are seats in the front row. If you'd like to move up here, you might feel better to sit up in the front. So for the first order of business, we just need to be clear about attendance that are. I think Tucker is the only person. So Tucker Sauls is absent, but we need a person to sit in. Is Josh here?
I'm here.
Josh, I'd like you to sit in for Tucker for tonight. And the next order of business is approval of the minutes from the January sixth regular meeting. I read the minutes of January sixth. I don't have anything to add or corrections that need to be made, so. Any of the other commissioners want to log in on the January sixth? Comments, corrections? Anything on January sixth? Hearing, could I have a motion to approve the minutes as they were submitted for January sixth?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approved the minutes from the January sixth twenty twenty five regular meeting.
And a second, please.
A second.
Okay. And all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Minutes are adopted unanimously.
I'm gonna abstain.
One extension. Okay. So we're moving ahead to the next area of action tonight is the first of our two public hearings. The first one we're gonna take up is the request for a zone change on some property at fifteen oh three Hot Meadow Street. And my colleague Tony is gonna read for the record the notice of the meeting. It's fairly brief, so.
Hey, it's, excuse me, ZC twenty four dash twenty seven, an application of Adam Westhaver, DA Buck LLC for a zone change from I one industrial to B two general business on a plus or minus fifteen acre portion of an overall plus or minus fifty four point eight six acre parcel located at fifteen oh three Hot Meadow Street. Assessor ID map. I zero four block four zero three lot zero one five.
George, I've forgotten if you wanted to say a few words to.
Yeah, I've got some maps and then I let the applicant provide their own presentation.
Could you amend the agenda?
No, we don't.
You don't?
Okay.
Nope. Uh, so yeah, so it's, so it's a zone change application from the current I one to, which is an industrial designation. To B two, which is kind of your middle general business zone. So the applicant is proposing that zone change on a fifteen acre portion of an, uh, of an overall fifty four acre parcel, which you can see on the screen, everyone's left, except yours to your right. Um, so that is a fifteen acre portion of an overall fifty four acre parcel between, essentially between the International Skating Center and the Big Y and Dorset Crossing to the north on Hot Meadow Street. To the west, you have the Tobacco Valley Solar Project. And then to the east, you have kind of the, the, the retail development along Hot Meadow Street, including Holloway's and, and others. So the applicant's provided in your packet a series of maps. And the first map is the existing zoning map. As you can see, the, the light purple there with the star is, that is, that is the I one zone. And then to the north, you have Dorset Crossing, which is zoned planned area development. That's essentially your mixed use zoning district where we allow commercial and, uh, and residential and, and those kinds of uses. Across the street in that kind of lighter red is B two. So there is adjoining B two up and down the Hot Meadow Street corridor. And then to the south, that lighter blue is the Cambridge Crossing development zoning. So as part of the application, the applicant provides a proposed zone, and you can see what the star is. That is the area that would, is proposed to, to have a zone change from I one to B two. The applicant has provided also a survey because when we, when, when a zone change is considered on a, a portion of a parcel that hasn't been subdivided, that is permissible, but we ask for a survey, a meets and bounds survey, so that it can be mapped properly. Um, we use our future land use plan as guidance when we review zone change applications. We ask ourselves, is the, uh, is the land use proposed, is the zone proposed consistent with our future land use plan? And when you zoom down into our future land use plan, which was adopted last year, um, this is the area is designated other economic development area. Uh, and that means it's supportive of a broad range of commercial and industrial activities. Uh, the planning commission, um, as part of the review is required under state statute. When you have a text amendment or a zone change, the, the planning commission reviews the application for consistency with your plan of conservation and development, your policy document. They reviewed it on January fourteenth. They made a recommendation of approval of six to zero, so unanimous, and found that the zone change was consistent with your plan of conservation and development. Uh, I think with that, I'd, I'd defer to the, the applicant to, to provide a little bit of broader presentation.
Just be careful. Just as a reminder, could you start with your name and address for the record?
Yes, yes. Adam Westtaver, I live at ten Brownstone Turn in Simsbury.
Yeah, Philip Doyle, L A D A. We're land planners here in Simsbury on the one oh four West Street. And we've made the application for Adam's company. Um, Adam, as you know, is the owner of the, um, ice skating, uh, business and the building itself. The town owns the land underneath the skating center. And, uh, they have been, uh, uh, building, uh, this, uh, this past fall and part of the summer and expansion that we, uh, that you approved some number of, of months ago. And they're under contract, uh, to purchase the additional, uh, almost fifty five acres. George has done a wonderful job of explaining, uh, the, uh, the application. The, uh, Adam has, and his company has had expressed to him interest in doing more retail, commercial type development in this area. And the, see, the, the B two zoning exists on the other side of the street and immediately south of, of, of this. And my impression is that it, it's been there for a long, long time, as long as we've been in town. And it's sort of a remnant of the strip zoning that existed in the fifties and, and sixties, very narrow. And when you look at the, uh, Plan of Conservation and Development, Hoskins Crossing area, they talk about creating a sense of place. And the, uh, what we'd like to do with this fifteen acre area is start to create a village. Uh, stake, take this, stop the strip kind of development and, and move it inboard a little bit so that we can actually create an area that is like a village. And, um, we think it's more appropriate in this particular location on, on the, uh, on the fifty five acres because we're adjacent to, uh, some office development on the, on the Dorset Crossing, uh, area and also the, um, multifamily units. Having that, uh, the mixture of uses is a, is a nice transition. And, uh, it's, you know, we don't think long term, it's good for light industrial uses to be moving into that, that area. We see this area in, in transition from some of the light industrial uses. Uh, we don't have a master plan yet, uh, and we, uh, because the, the tenants, people who have been talking to us are not interested in really moving forward until we have the B two zoning in place. They want to, they want to have some, something to rely upon. And, uh, so that's why we're making the crossing or the, the, uh, application. Uh, uh, the question came up the other night at, um, is it the planning commission? And they said, why did you choose the stream? Well, the stream is a, the brook is a, is a nice demarcation spot that runs through the property. And pages six and seven of the zoning regulations, uh, give suggestions on where zone lines would be located. And, uh, one of those locations is the center line of a brook, so that's what we, we, we've chosen. And we think this is enough room to create the space that we, we, we'd like to start to develop. And, and that's really pretty much some, some and substance of it.
Did you want to draw any attention to the difference between the industrial zone and the business zone for those who aren't too familiar?
Well, the, the industrial zone side right now still allows us to expand the rink, uh, and the activities under the, uh, put it like the sports and entertainment areas, whereas the north side allows us to, uh, to zonify. It allows us to bring in, uh, the people that we're talking to outside, so.
Friends, is anybody on, are there commissioners who have questions that would like to?
I think it's wonderful.
Yeah. Can we hear just a little bit more about like what a village is?
So we're trying to create like an Olympic village type feel. So we want to create, uh, you're gonna have roads and obviously parking and all that stuff, but we want to make it so it's sort of like a walkable setup. Um, so if you're at the rink and you've got kids and you don't want to be cold, uh, you can go outside and walk around. There's a natural path that sort of follows the easement of sewer line that goes up towards the solar fields. And you're contemplating putting some sort of bike path that goes in there. And just sort of keep it, we want to keep it out of the hands of the industrial people that could potentially come in here with a big box situation. I'm in town, I live in town. I think we've done enough of that type of development. We need to come in and create like Phil says, a sense of place. I would love it to have a, an area where my, I could feel comfortable that my kids wanted to go in town, they wanted to go skating for a little while, then go down to the store, get something to eat, walk around with their buddies, and you kind of know where they are and you keep them out of trouble. Um, and that's kind of what we're trying to create, just a sense of place where people can go and the parents can go and have a nice time.
Ultimately, when we come in with plans, there, there will eventually be a road connection, make this happen between the entry drive, uh, the road system that comes into the skating center and, uh, Dorset Crossing so that people can move easily back and forth. And by, by doing it this way, rather than breaking it up into a whole series of small lots, we, we think we are able to implement access management so that we won't be able, we won't have to have a whole series of driveways out on, on Hot Meadow Street like we have on, on the opposite side of the, of the street. And since B two exists on the other side of the street and immediately south it, it seems to be the appropriate zone to, to use.
Are you thinking a similar type, style of like makeup as across the street, but formatted differently, so like small like phone businesses, restaurants?
There's a lot of small local businesses that are interested in coming over.
Yeah.
Um, again, I wanna, I want to selfishly, I want to make it in, in, into a, uh, design that's consistent with, uh, this actual building here. Uh, classic New England feel. Light posts that you see on the sidewalks and all that stuff, so when it is, uh, the holiday season, you'll see the lights out there and you can kind of walk around and enjoy yourself and have a nice time. And, uh, if you're anticipating, you know, with, with the success that we're having with the rink, one of the thoughts that we wanted to do was have like a horse drawing carriage, kind of like they have over at the, uh, uh, the, the farm there where the eggs are. Um, and, you know, create a little, uh, horse drawing carriage where you can kind of go through the woods and things like that. We want to create fun, enjoyable things, sort of Americana type stuff.
I, um, you might have read my mind because I was gonna ask about traffic and, um, because traffic on Hot Meadow is always sort of
Yes.
concerned, so I'm glad to hear that you have.
It's getting busier all the time and we'd like to keep, we'd like as much as possible to, to minimize the interaction so it's happening, happening at specific points. Uh, the, at some point in the future, when the, when the warrants are there, we may have, end up with a traffic signal at the end of the skating center driveway. But, but that will minimize the, the amount of traffic and, and, uh, try to create internal connections so those people don't have to drive on the street. That, that would be the goal.
I think this is great, very thoughtful. Thank you.
Could you just remind us, were you describing a exit from basically the fifteen acre area through the same driveway that has the light for Dorset Crossing?
Over Dorset Crossing, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's already an O S T agreement in place with the state. We just have to, uh, elaborate on.
Yeah, I can remember, uh, you know, the owners of that development expected a very southerly enlargement of their
Yes.
enterprise that never unfolds, but I think that traffic was anticipated in the design and the placement of the traffic.
Yeah, we're gonna, and that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna use the same, same one. We just have to modify it a little bit.
Yeah, that we, as we understand it, the, from, uh, Scott Hesketh, um, who's our traffic engineering, that, that the Dorset Crossing light is technically underutilized according to the DOTs because they had anticipated more development. So it's set up for us.
They anticipated at least fifty five acres connected to their site. And just remind me, does a sidewalk run all the way along?
Runs all the way along.
Oh, okay.
Good.
I know it's not too long. I'm, my wife accuses me of being not very observant and gentle. I just noticed the tobacco barns. What year did that come? Oh, my gosh. I think it's, it's ripe for development, and I hope you guys are satisfied.
We do too.
So did anybody in the public have a question or a comment that they'd like to get to the microphone on? If you want to speak about this, we do this a bit informally, but you need to come up to the podium to speak so that we get a good recording of what you're saying. And, uh, just as a sort of a reminder for the veterans here, but, um, our process is, this is an opportunity to share your thoughts, the insights that you might offer about this project. It's not a debate and discussion time between you and the, uh, developer and owner or with the commission. It's just an opportunity for you to have, uh, to say whatever's on your mind relative to the proposal that we're looking at tonight. Whoever would like to be first to line up, and, uh, again, if you could give your name and your address for the record, and then feel free to, uh, share your thoughts.
You guys can see me, I'm a little short. Um, Rosa Chen from Seventy Cambridge Court, which is in, uh, Cambridge Crossing. I'm the little house where that little corner of the black dot line, um, is cutting it right there. Um, so I actually think this development up in the north corner is really good, especially considering where I live. Um, the reason why I wanted to come tonight is to speak to the piece right behind the residential development. Eventually Cambridge Crossing is going to be all built out. There's a town forest on one part of it. Um, and I think it would be a good idea, I mean, you talk about bike trails and things like that, to somehow keep that forest nature that abuts the houses there, to give them a buffer zone, um, while allowing development by Hot Meadow, which I think is great because it would be a lot better than what it looks like today. Um, so I don't know if there's some way the zoning commission can think about how it is that you maintain the balance between having trees and nature that's already there while allowing the development to go through. Um, I'm just thinking about, there's already a lot of traffic through the trails and sometimes they kind of cut through Cambridge Crossing. Um, so I'm thinking if you put more development back there, then there's more people trying to cut through and, um, it's a little disruptive. It's not really talking about this particular parcel, but it is kind of addressing, once you start developing one piece of the parcel, then that kind of opens the road to developing more in the future, so.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, let me just, um, uh, okay, come on.
I'll say a few words.
While, while he's coming up, let me just make, um, two, two points for you, just for the record. We did receive, um, Capital Region Council of Government referral. We, we provide that packet to the Capital Region Council of Government on any zone change. And, uh, they found that it was consistent with the regional plan. And then finally, the applicant did provide, uh, the posting affidavit of the sign, so that is for the public record as well.
Hi, um, Terry Connors, twenty five Butter Nut Lane, Weetog. Um, just had a couple of thoughts listening to the, you know, the project. Um, I would definitely support it. I've seen the way they've turned the skating rink around, which was a mess. And if they continue that vision up there, I think it's, it's just a, a positive for the town, so I would definitely support that.
Thank you. Somebody recognized that, Wendy.
I never get to do public audience, so I'm taking advantage of it. We're not recognizing you. Um, Wendy Maxudis, sixteen Hunting Ridge Drive, speaking as a resident in town for a long time. I think this is a great project. We've seen the expansion at the ISCC. We've actually worked with them and just kind of, um, see the new, um, rinks coming in and more skaters in town and more programs in town. And we all know that we need development in town, retail, whatever, commercial development for our tax base. So I don't see anything wrong with this project. I just think it would be great for the north end of town and to get another area in town where we can all go shop, have a coffee, walk around. So I just wanted to say my two cents, but I think it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
And then, Mr. Chair, the only thing I would offer, just, I was gonna offer while the applicant was speaking, you know, you can help all the time, but, um, it is a zone change. So when, when a use does come before you, and a use will come before you, you will review a site plan and you'll review the traffic and you'll review the landscaping for any, for any use that ultimately lands on this parcel.
So that everyone's clear that there's, there's more to go on this when a plan is shaped up and they're ready to put forward. We're back again, but, um, that one doesn't have a public hearing. That has, uh, a public process, but it doesn't have the opportunity for people to speak. But anyway, that, that's not on the table just yet, so. Public is done, uh, I think we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
And a second. Thank you. Any further discussion on closing the public hearing? And we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. And the motion passes unanimously. The public hearing is closed. So now it's, uh, on the commission to make some, a decision, uh, after a long conversation, I'm sure. But, uh, does anybody want to offer comments or insights, reactions to, uh, start us off?
Um, so I think the location is good. It's, you know, you're continuing that red zone that I think we really want to see along Hot Meadow as much as possible. Um, so I think that makes a lot of sense in terms of just continuing a business use on the main strip there. And, um, obviously the plan sounds like a really nice reflective of Simsbury type of a plan. So I think it's, um, it's nice and I can't wait to see it come to fruition a little bit more for the next one.
Okay. Jackie, you look like you have something to say.
I didn't know if I could speak. I'm, I'm in favor of it. I think it's wonderful. And like Kate said, it's commercial. It's exactly where we want it. And it will help with the development of the ISCC.
Thank you. Shannon?
Um, I, I think it's great. I live on the north end of town, so this makes me happy too.
Yeah, I live near, near an area as well. I think it's a great idea and I support it.
Um, I'm gonna echo everybody else. Everybody's already said everything I was gonna say, so I don't have much, but, um, yeah, I agreed, um, you know, I'm, I'm team ISCC to begin with, and I think that the development makes sense, so, um, I think it's great.
Thank you. Josh?
I've done nothing to add that hasn't already been said at least twice. I see no downsides.
Uh, so I apologize. I don't have a, I don't have a draft motion in front of you. I do have it on the screen.
Okay. Um, I think that from my, from my perspective, I think this is a great opportunity for further development in Simsbury, and that's an area that needs it, has needed it for a long time. So, uh, I'm looking forward to seeing this thing move forward, and I'm enthusiastic about the support of, of all the commissioners for this project. As I said earlier, I wish the developer and the design team, um, good luck. But here we are. Um, if, if, if there are no further comments discussion, then, uh, I think we're ready for a vote. I'd like to get a motion though on the table. If somebody would, uh, make the motion by reading that draft. Diane, would you like to do that?
I'll do it. I'll do it.
To see it.
Okay. I move that the zoning commission approves ZC twenty four dash two seven, an application of Adam Westhaver, DA Buck LLC for a zone change from I one industrial to B two general business on a fifteen acre, fifteen acre portion of an overall fifty four point eight six acre parcel located at fifteen oh three Hot Meadow Street. Assessor's ID map, I zero four block four oh three lot zero one five, based on a finding that the zone change is consistent with the economic development policies and future land use map found in the Plan of Conservation and Development. Zone change is based on the boundary survey dated one fifteen twenty five, prepared by F A Hesketh and Associates. The effective date of the zone change is one twenty two twenty five pending the statutory appeals process.
Second? So Diane was the motion, Tony's the second. And, uh, we've got a discussion. And all, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
And those opposed, uh, the motion not carried unanimously, so good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. See you soon.
The sooner the better.
Thank you.
The next public hearing is a resumption of a public hearing that's been going on for previous meetings. I forgot the date of the very first one. So we're continuing the public hearing, and the format is we're gonna start with public input. Uh, first, we're gonna start with George with a sort of a run through of the four, uh, topics, the key topics or subtopics within, uh, the changes that we're proposing for the, uh, zoning code to enhance the opportunity for home, development of homes in Simsbury. But, uh, and then after that, we'll have, uh, after George, then the public, the opportunity to speak, and then we'll have commission discussion. I, I want to alert folks at this point that, um, one of our commissioners, Tucker Sauls, is inactive due temporarily in Washington DC. I've, I've forgotten if he's in the national, because I mean, he's, he's with the guard in Washington DC, and he's asked if we could, if we would hold the vote until he gets back for the next meeting. So it's my intention to honor his request to hold the vote for this meeting, and it's quite possible that we wouldn't be for a vote tonight anyway. Just wanted to know that out of respect and appreciation for the service, we're gonna wait, uh, till the next meeting. And, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll have a productive discussion and opportunity tonight for everybody to share their thoughts. We've had three other, uh, meetings where we had public input and some people took a hint, the other three. So in any case, why don't we start? George, you're gonna do with the slide set. Somebody, I think we threw a lot.
The same slide set from the last two meetings, so. But there's plenty of new folks here tonight, so I think we'll be able to. Okay, ZC, uh, twenty four dash oh six is a zoning text amendment. Uh, we're calling it a housing strategies or housing toolkit, and it really deals with four kind of separate tools for housing and housing opportunity and housing diversity and what will happen. And I'll, I'll go through, through a specific description of them one by one. So inclusionary zoning, accessory dwelling unit process, standard small lot zoning, and revisions to our, what we call a most flexible zone, the workforce housing overlay zone. Uh, but we're gonna take a, a step back to start and, and, and think about kind of how we got here while we're, we're talking about these actions today. Um, you know, the town and its planning documents, really since two thousand and ten, have included a commitment to, uh, affordable housing, housing opportunity and housing diversity. Um, in the recently adopted Plan of Conservation and Development, and that's our, that's our policy document in, in, for, for land use that is approved by the planning commission. And we say that we're gonna provide, this is an adopted policy after a, a long process, frankly, last year. We want to do things like provide for a range of housing choices for people of all ages in our community and economic circumstances, but also while respecting our distinctive living environment here in Simsbury. We have goals and strategies, things like we want to increase the number of affordable units. We have goals and strategies, things like we want to increase the number of affordable units in the town of Simsbury. We want to seek ways to help meet the diverse housing needs of of present residents as well as future residents. And that overarching policy commitment really is based in changing demographics, aging population, changing in housing preferences, such that single-family homes don't always meet everyone's housing needs. And the Plan of Conservation and Development, again, our policy document, recognizes that there's an interest and need for more housing, more housing options. And that's really embedded in both the twenty-seventeen Plan of Conservation and Development document as well as the twenty-twenty-four. So it's really how we we've got here, that the town has made a commitment to consider options. And that's what the zoning commission is doing. We have we have laid a basis, really over the last four years in particular. In two thousand and twenty-one, we adopted an affordable housing plan required by by state statute. Two thousand and twenty-four, you adopted a plan of conservation and development, a new one. And then in June, the zoning commission went through a process to look at some of those goals and actions that were directed to them as part of that process. And the zoning commission prioritized the series of housing opportunities and tools to consider. And then finally, even the Board of Selectmen has has made a a clear commitment to affordability in town with their housing advisory committee. So so we have we have policy foundation to to do all of this. All right, so let me walk you through the the four items. The first is related to accessory dwelling units. So we have we've we've permitted in the town of Simsbury accessory dwelling units. Those are small, secondary homes, you know, just called the mother-in-law suites or above the garage. We've allowed those in the town of Simsbury for for three decades, almost three decades now. So this process is not about relitigating whether affordable dwelling units are good or bad. It is a process, and the draft suggests a change to how we approve those units in order to reduce barriers. So the text would revise the regulation to allow both attached and detached accessory dwelling units as a matter of right. Today, an attached unit is is reviewed and approved by site plan through the zoning commission, and a detached unit is approved and reviewed by the zoning commission as a site plan and a public hearing as part of that process. So this change would allow staff administrative review, what we say, what we mean when we say, say, by right use. So that is a reduction of that barrier for those kinds of uses. Two, you know, kind of the more complicated of of the four items, the inclusionary housing set aside. So this is a this is a text amendment that would require an affordable an affordable component as a part of any residential development. So any residential development, single-family, multifamily, above ten units, would be required to provide fifteen percent of their homes currently as drafted that are that are affordable under the definition, meaning that sixty percent of half of them have to be at sixty percent of area median income, and eighty percent have to be at area median, the other half have to be at eighty percent of area median income. So it's below market requirement as far. There's no buyout, no fee. They would be deed restricted and be provided for a period of forty years. The draft introduces a smaller lot, an R-eight zone. Smaller lots usually means smaller houses. It usually means they're more affordable. And our smallest lot size in our community is fifteen thousand square feet. So this opportunity to provide for smaller lots, and in this particular, as drafted, would allow both two-family homes and single-family homes on minimum eight thousand square foot lots. The idea is it's an opportunity for first-time homebuyers, lower price point, and potentially a diversity of architectural style. And the last the the last item is revisions to our workforce housing overlay zone. There's a lot of stuff up there, but it's it's really fairly simple. The workforce housing overlay zone is our most flexible zoning district. It allows for mixed-use product. It allows for different kinds of housing. It could be multifamily, it could be townhouses. It allows for all those. It is in the zoning ordinance today. It's in your zoning regulations today. This proposal would remove what what we think is a pretty difficult-to-understand design section, where we already have townwide design guidelines and a good design guideline document. So there's a little bit of a conflict there. A removal of the restrict, there's a restriction that that this kind of zoning must be within seven hundred and fifty feet of Hot Meadow Street. Not quite sure there's any reason for the restriction. There's a two-part review process for zone change, special exception in site plan, potentially two public hearings as part of that process. I think the draft would would allow the zoning commission to find the best location to use that that zoning district. We'd also remove the twenty percent affordable requirement, assuming that if you if you adopt some form of inclusionary zoning, that would apply to all developments, such as. So I'm going to go ahead and and maybe yield back my time to to you, Mr. Chairman, and I think we've just heard plenty of people here who'd like to speak. And I I I can speak to to the to the memos that I provided, providing options of, you know, based on some of the comments.
How about if we do that part? I would like you to do that, but I'll let the public speak first.
Yeah, sure.
So, well, numbers of the public, as we did with a few speakers for the first public hearing, we need you to come up to the microphone area or the podium, the microphone's in the ceiling or something. In any case, there's a recording being made and and broadcast, too. But if you would give your name and your address. And then also, as the chairman, it's my responsibility to ensure order in our meetings. And that means, in in this case, you have to be sensitive to the fact that your your speaking needs to be connected with these issues that that George just ran over, the elements that we're considering changing, really. And I I understand if you have other things to say about the town and how much you like it here and enjoy the opportunity to come and share your thoughts. It really needs to be sort of contained in that area. I'm not going to tell you you have three minutes or four minutes, but hopefully it be concise. And here we go. So who'd like to be first? To step up to the microphone and your name and your address.
I need to, I'm going to sit here too long. My name's Joshua Storm. I live at twelve Church Street. My house is on a six thousand square foot lot. There's plenty of non-conforming houses in this community that were built long before zoning came in. My house is affordable. It's one of the few ways I, as a public employee, can afford to live in this house or in this town. I've grown up in this town. I've been a volunteer firefighter, a volunteer EMT, and I want to continue to stay in this town. These are smart, well-thought-out, and beneficial to the town. There's also a new issue, though. At the General Assembly, there's House Bill five zero zero two. And if we don't adopt these regulations, the state may be deciding for us. And that would be awful. While some people may have some objections, we elect these people. They answer to us, the people. They're reasonable people. I think they can make good decisions to, for the best interest of this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Me being Bob Clark. I live on thirteen Fire Tower Road. I'm a little alarmed over the design and the details that are part of this housing strategies toolkit that's currently proposed, and I have the following concerns. The toolkit is made up of four distinct and separate proposals. Each are complex unto themselves, in my opinion, and I just wondered why they were blended into a single package. As presented, these four proposals can be voted up or down in a single final vote. Why all four or nothing? Would it be clearer and give Simsbury residents a better understanding if they were separated and addressed individually? Within the package are scenarios where, as we hear, public notices and public hearings are eliminated. I believe the residents have a right to know who and what is being built on their neighboring property. Clearly and without warning, this could result in negative impacts on existing homeowners regarding property values, personal safety, and security. And one can argue this could be an attempt to be less transparent by our town government, and I hope that's not the case. Until tonight, in watching the last two meetings on this issue, I only heard one person speak in favor until tonight of these proposals, and I believe he was a developer. So I would expect the commission's final vote to reflect the views and concerns of all Simsbury residents. I did not see in the new P O C D any imaginative impact studies on how these new goals for high-density housing and increased population affects the fire, police, EMS, and our school systems, but if I missed that, my apologies. The proposal indicates a desire for high-density housing rather than the presentation of our communities, in my opinion. It seeks increasing population over the conservation of our wetlands, open space, and what makes Simsbury unique. I urge the commission to rework this toolkit to have four separate proposals and vote on them individually and not collectively. Thank you.
Joan?
Joan Coe, twenty-six Wyndham Drive. ZC twenty-four oh-six Housing Strategy Toolkit should be denied as a mechanism for spot zoning and creating land uses that are an abomination of land regulations. Affordable housing should not be regulated as a mechanism for social engineering. In the past, regulations in land use with requirements for affordable units has not been able to be sustained. Fifty-five and older units on Noel Lane, their first homes under regulations, were immediately changed as residents could not sell their property with these restrictions. The homes on Bushy Hill Road with restrictions were lifted by a vote of the Board of Selectmen. The Eno Farmers Affordable Homes have had a history of non-compliance. Owen Murphy and Virginia Connolly Homes are an example of compliance with the Eno Trust for the Poor. The old Anseim Bickford Homes throughout the town has many affordable homes that are sold as affordable units, not through stringent regulations, but through traditional market values. Creating a mechanism for little igloos throughout the town on a new R-eight zone is creating a landscape that is inconsistent with the Simsbury culture and will forever destroy the impressive landscape of Simsbury. The building stock at Simsbury has many homes in all price points. Using spot zoning and social engineering is not the role of the zoning commission for managing societal needs. I urge the zoning commission to reject this mechanism of land use, of land using text amendments and develop the remaining land to increase economic development. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch and Twitter at Joan Coe for you to review. Thank you for listening.
Good evening. Thank you. Alice Turner, eleven Varner Drive, Simsbury. Commissioners and town offices. After COVID and after all else that has transpired during the past eight years, you are now going to do what to our neighborhoods? Residents have been looking for a return to some degree of normalcy after so much national turmoil. But now you are going to be considering radical alterations to our neighborhood zoning rules. These planning proposals offer radical change, a dumbing down, if you will, of Simsbury zoning regulations, which will promote unnatural population increases, disruption of accepted neighborhood property and family relationships, the miniaturization of lot sizes, deregulation of design standards, and unreasonably affordable numbers. Simsbury is still dealing with the disruptions owing to the gigantic and ever-so-densely-packed Talke Mountain North Complex and the overbuilding of other apartment and condo structures put up during the past fifteen years. We are all well aware of the problems from ever-increasing unsustainable traffic on our roads, the burden of higher Connecticut and Farmington Valley taxes, and related cost increases for schools, police, fire, and town services. The current planning proposals are way overboard. Will be an unwelcome political headache for elected leaders and will be strongly resented, resisted, and deservedly rejected by Simsbury voters, given the chance. They will, big time, exacerbate livability issues in Simsbury already under attack from previous development decisions. Sad to say. Please remember that it was preservation-minded Simsbury residents who, four decades ago, decisively rejected having Interstate I-eighty-four pass through Simsbury, which would have gobbled up the slopes of Talke Mountain and could have led to an unwelcome sudden population explosion in Simsbury as well. But no conflicted interests held sway at that time, and Simsbury remained a relatively small town, now developed to livable limits, and it appears that residents prefer to keep it that way, often voicing the sentiment that those who wish for more crowded city life should move to West Hartford. The current planning ideas are being offered in parallel with radical proposals by the Sustainability Committee that were presented to the Board of Selectmen last September and in that committee's newsletter of January twenty twenty-five. Altogether, there is thus evidence of an agenda at work designed to usurp freedom of democratic choice from the residents of Simsbury. Now again, these highly disruptive proposals concerning future livability in Simsbury deserve, if not correctly rejected by zoning, to be presented to voters in a regular general November election and carefully worded referendum on the matter, as has often occurred with other major townwide issues. Such was the case when the question of marijuana sales came in town three years ago. Planning zoning and the Board of Selectmen were gearing up to approve such sales without input from the electorate until a four-month referendum effort and general election took place in which conservation-minded, family-oriented voters decisively rejected pot sales in Simsbury. Commissioners now have another important situation before them as debate begins on these current planning proposals that appear to be related to the American Planning Association's Agenda Twenty-One, now known as Agenda Twenty Thirty, a foreign progressive agenda formulated some years ago by an anti-American United Nations. To shed more light on that agenda, I have therefore passed out to commissioners information that reveals disturbing similarities between Agenda Twenty Thirty and the current planning proposal. between Agenda Twenty Thirty and the current planning proposal before you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joan. Who do you want to be next, Diane?
Excuse me, Diane Nash, five Mary Wood, Simsbury. I will not speak to all of the four tools in your toolkit, though I could because I find them incredibly obtrusive. But tonight, I just say the scope and magnitude of the changes in this toolkit housing strategy so substantially impact the community, it defies logic, as some other people know. That to approve them in a text amendment makes no sense as a strategy. And I even wonder, not you guys, but if the strategy wasn't done just for that. Because the single item that is on there that would be easy for you to not have to reflect on and whatever is the proposal to take away the public hearing piece on the accessory apartment. So you have all this stuff before you, but you know what? We're just gonna approve this one little easy thing that takes the zoning regulation and makes the accessory dwelling every property at least changes from a single-family home to a multifamily property. You are not approving just to hand it over to the administration. You are making a zone change because every property, doesn't have to be on sewer and water, as long as it conforms to the rear and sideline. You have changed the zoning in the neighborhoods. You're not voting for an administrative change. You're voting for a zone change everywhere, on every piece of property, except in the new R eighty zone. So why not let anybody build a business property? Well, they have a rental property online. I can make money, Howard can make money. Here's why not. Because, and we bought in Simsbury, all of you, bought based on the zoning that was in effect. If you're gonna change the zoning in my neighborhood, I better have a right to come and speak to you and say how it affects me, my value, my property. It's an impactful change. And frankly, it's a worrisome strategy that I'm afraid is going beneath the surface. Having a public hearing tomorrow night is not paying attention to the charter revision. We are quickly moving away from where the public has the voice and the Board of Selectmen has the control. Our elected officials listening to the people. We are listening more to the administration who tells the board what they should be doing. And instead of the board saying, this is what we want to do, this is what the public wants us to do, and the administration should be helping them carry out the things they want to accomplish. So we've got things sort of backwards. So I ask you, please, don't approve this, it seems like, easy change. And I'd say, don't approve any change. We have a moratorium that we don't know whether it's gonna be approved or denied until the end of March. So it may make no difference in the world if they don't approve. So if they don't approve the moratorium, then we better go back to the drawing board and say, if they get rid of the people in Hartford who are demanding these kind of things. Or find out what it is that we had to change in our zoning that allows us to get a moratorium and change it the way we want. We have to allow public input on any change you guys make. And the first gentleman that got up and spoke said, we elected you because we do your job. Don't let your job be taken away. Thank you.
Oh, somebody in the front.
Hold on, Linda. Yeah.
Somebody behind.
My name is Colonel Stewart. I'm at Five Talon Circle. For the detached accessory dwelling, please continue to have public audience. I don't think you're realizing by allowing any detached dwellings what it does to the community, to the local neighbors, and to the feel of the local neighbors. Public hearing is, it should be allowed by everyone to voice their opinion and for you to hear and base your decisions upon theirs. As for the R eight zoning, I would request if smaller lots are going to have to be put in place, that they be kept at a minimum in any one location, and that that goes for your quarter of houses as well. Start grouping smaller to go, smaller homes together, you run into problems. And please do not remove the seven fifty-foot front end. Thank you.
Oh, come right up.
Hello, I'm Linda Johnson, formerly on Muscat Trail, now in Powder Forest, thirty-two Bantry Road. I'm an over fifty-year resident of Simsbury and a homeowner, and I'm here to oppose going forward with the four presented proposals. I do not see that we need to make it easier and more profitable for builders and developers by decreasing the size of buildable lots, or that it's fair in any way for a homeowner to be surprised to know that a next-door neighbor is adding an additional living unit and never having a say in the decision. I don't understand how this topic, this general topic that we're here discussing tonight, how it ever came up for discussion in the dead of winter. I don't think the majority of homeowners residents are even aware of this. I've talked to many, they don't understand what is happening. I think it is time to consider the homeowners who live here and for the board to really represent themselves. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is George Harris. I live at twenty Fairview Street. I've served as the senior minister of First Church of Christ in Simsbury for the last nine years. I have prepared a stirring sermon with extensive citations of chapter and verse from scripture, but I've decided to set that aside and just speak as a resident this evening. It's been a privilege to live here for the last nine years. Simsbury's been very good. To my family and I, all the things that you know so well. Some of the things that I hear from people in my church are the need for more available housing for our community's young people to return to the community, for our seniors to age in place, for those who work here to be able to live here, people we love that are part of our lives. In my opinion, in my experience, opening up access for these would only enrich our community, not degrade it. I have read some of the commentary on the specifics of the proposals, but I'm not the one that's best equipped to speak to those. But I have followed conversations like this over years, and I have learned that there are always reasons to oppose that will stretch out these processes indefinitely so that nothing ever changes. And if we want to be faithful, again, to really want our young people to come back and live here, for our seniors to be able to remain here, for people we love that work in our community, serving our parents, serving our children, then we need to take this seriously and not just draw lines in the sand and oppose it. I'm sure there are some adjustments to be made, I'm sure those can be made, but I would strongly encourage you to figure that out and make some change. Thank you.
Good evening. Lynn Laubin, thirty-three Harvest Hill. Lynn Laubin, my husband Bob is with me. We've lived here fifty-one years. We've had a privilege to live here fifty-one years. It's remarkable and beautiful town. We are preaching to the choir here because we all know that. We raised our four children here. Nineteen years ago, we retired and we just couldn't leave. Of our four children who still live here, our son is married and they both work full-time, and they're doing just fine. One of our daughters lives in the Weetog section and she rents a single, one-bedroom apartment. Nine years ago, she came and it was eight hundred and fifty-five dollars a month. Suddenly, not so suddenly, it seems exponential to us that it's fourteen hundred and fifty dollars, and it's been promised that when her lease comes up in July, it'll be just under sixteen. Now you might say, oh, that's pretty inexpensive for Simsbury, but for her, she can't do it. Sometimes she walks four miles to town. She lives in Weetog, but in this weather, I get her and bring her in. But with her available income, she won't be able to stay here. We did almost find a place here, and they said, well, she had to make, I think, forty-eight thousand. So her father and I said we would cosign, and then they said, we don't take cosigns. So we're still looking. I guess our story is a little more personal than some that have spoken. But we are hoping that affordable housing will come in some form, some workable, reasonable form. Here's what I believe. I grew up in Wisconsin in the forties and fifties. All my aunts and uncles and cousins lived around us. Family took care of family. Well, Bob's a walker now and we might need a little assistance. Our daughter, the one I spoke of, comes and stays with us during the weekends. We help her, she helps us, and we're doing just fine right now. I'm just looking for the future because, you know, we may need more assistance. Bob and I might need more assistance as we age. And so we can't take her in, you know, people's, our friends say, why don't, you gotta make sure better, why don't you take her in? And that would be nice, except we're kicking the can down the road because once we leave, she will have to find somewhere else, you see. So this is why Bob and I are asking the good people of Simsbury, are you all? I don't know about the zoning and all the changes. This is just from the heart, that there would be a way that she could stay and be with family. There are many stories. Many stories of me. Ours is just one, so I thank you very much for letting me share our story. And I do hope that there'll be a reasonable, workable way. I know it's not easy. I know there's problems, but I'm just hoping that there'll be a way that this can help us and maybe others who are in that same situation. Thank you.
Oh, I'm confused. A fellow in the back is leaving.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, step right up.
Good evening. My name is Mario Chia Patty, and I reside at Chief Bruce Lane in Weetog. My family and I have been residents of Simsbury for twenty-five years and have enjoyed living here. I've been following Simsbury's efforts with respect to affordable housing since twenty twenty, when the town started developing its affordable housing plan. I also served on the Simsbury D E I Council Housing Subcommittee that Sheryl Cook chaired. I am in support of the four suggested changes to our existing zoning regulations. I believe they will help Simsbury in its efforts to develop more affordable housing. While I'm not a housing expert, I would like to make some comments. With respect to the inclusionary zoning piece, I have read Mr. George Ellis and Mr. Nelson's comments. I agree with them to the extent that the town will need to be proactive with developers if we wish for them to build these new homes. As you know, there are several ways in which to do this, by offering different incentives, all of which need to be carefully considered by the town. My question would be, who will be responsible for developing these incentives and working with each developer? Two, while the proposed regulations state that the affordable units have to be a specific percentage of units at sixty, eighty percent AMI and sixty percent AMI, I suggest that we require or make clear that these units, whether one-bedroom or two-bedrooms, be in the same proportion as the units that are market-priced. Three, compliance and oversight. It is important that we have oversight and have strict enforcement mechanisms with these developments to make sure that they all comply with our requirements. This could be done either by town staff or by using an outside administrator. Four, affordability preservation. I note we are stating that these affordable housing units will be deed restricted for forty years. What will happen after that period ends? Shouldn't we keep them deed restricted so that we do not lose these affordable units? During my time on the D E I Housing Subcommittee, we held several panel discussions as well as a town-wide community dinner where over one hundred residents attended. We also had several interviews with residents. We heard from our senior residents or young residents, as well as people who work in town and must travel here. We heard loud and clear that Simsbury needs more affordable housing, not only for those groups, but also for individuals and families who wish to move to Simsbury to enjoy all the benefits that we enjoy daily. I want to thank you for all your service and dedication. I know it takes a lot of time. Thank you for your time, Cass.
Anyone else? Okay, sure.
Hi, my name is Bert Helfand. I've lived, I live at Two Hop Hollow. I've lived in Simsbury for just shy of twenty years. I won't take a lot of time, but I wanted to make it clear that there is considerable support for these proposals within the town. Because contrary to some of the arguments we've heard, these are reasonable and modest suggestions. And to make that point, I'll just address one of them, the one about accessory dwelling units. We haven't placed regulations that determine what may or may not be built as an accessory dwelling unit. Those regulations aren't going to change. The only proposal is to change the determination of who's complying with the law and who's not. The notion that we need public hearings and public audience to make that determination is an exaggeration. And let's be honest, the point is that people want an opportunity to put roadblocks in the place, in the way of building these units. That's not right. That's not fair. We have a law that's been in place and we can trust our town staff to administer it. It is not part of a conspiracy. It is not a radical change to the character of the town. It's simply an administrative question that eliminates an unnecessary step. That is not a radical change and I urge you to support these changes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Gilbert. I live at one twenty-six Hot Meadow Street in Weetog. I've been following this process for a couple of months now. And so I have a general statement to make and then I want to make a couple of points after that. I oppose the proposals and request an answer on the moratorium application before zoning votes on the toolkit. I want Simsbury to remain a highly desirable town with qualities that we currently possess. I've lived here over thirty years and we have built a lot of dense housing all over town. A lot of those places are very well hidden behind trees and woodlands. But we are now like approaching, such as Vessel being built, an apartment building right on Hot Meadow Street. The push to develop more will make Simsbury less affordable. Less affordable to those of us who live there now. Note, if we grow too big to manage our own towns, schools, to be able to provide adequate services of the police, the fire, emergency services, we won't want to live here anymore. I know it sounds like an exaggeration, but look at LA. LA didn't manage their problem, their potential problem, well enough to be able to prevent a disaster. And I'm not saying that we are open to a disaster, but if we keep building and building and people are concerned about the schools and our fire department is stressed and our ambulance service is stressed, then we don't want to be here because we won't get the services that our taxes pay for. I want to be specific about not removing the public hearing. And I've spoken before about not removing the public hearing for detached accessory dwellings and I still feel strongly that neighbors should be informed and have the opportunity. It doesn't mean that they have the final vote because zoning has the final vote about it. But I think that communication with the community is extremely important. Our eight concern, I just have, I have concerns about having R eight created in neighborhoods where it's already R fifteen and people have their single-family homes and they expect that things will stay the same. And so I have concerns about that. I also I have a concern about, I heard the word oversight and I hadn't been thinking about that for a while. The development that is being allowed out past past the ice skating rink. The latest apartments that are going to be allowed, we talked, it was discussed in the zoning meeting about how if there is somebody who is there who has an affordable housing apartment, but then their income goes up and they don't qualify anymore, then another apartment could be made, an affordable housing apartment. Who's going to oversee that? Who's going to oversee, like so many times, we've had questions about buildings that are being built in town now and why is it taking them so long? Like right down by me on Talkeet Mountain North, where the daycare center is supposed to be and we've been told it's going to be a daycare center for what, a couple of years now, and it's still not finished. There are some things where with growth and development, we need people to be in position to oversee some of these things to make sure that they are living up to what they said they were going to do at the get-go. And that's it. Thank you. I'll let my blood pressure go down.
Erin Levitt Smith, Seven Winter Green. I just want to thank the zoning commission because as a member of the planning commission and having done the two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty-four P O C D. One of the things that I really appreciate with town staff is how are we going to implement and hold our feet to the fire to do some of the things that we've outlined in the P O C D? And I really commend the zoning commission because I think of any other board in the town, you were really taking a look at the P O C D and really gone through to say, how can we implement some of these really well-thought-out sections of the P O C D to make it more affordable, to bring business into town while preserving open space? I mean, there's a whole host of things and I just want to commend you because these are not easy discussions. I really have enjoyed listening to the discussion tonight. They're not easy decisions, but I think you've been a real leader in trying to tackle these things to say what really is best for our town and as one that really appreciates a diversity within the town, I just think it makes our town stronger in so many ways. So thank you for all your work.
Good evening. I'm Glenn Scholder from Seventy County Road. First of all, I want to thank the commission for all the time that you put in on these important issues. They really are important. I'm here tonight because I read some comments in the paper about the proposals before you. I know how much time the zoning commission and staff has put into the preparation of these. I also recognize in Simsbury, how much demand and need there really is for housing alternatives and choices. Some of the things that we heard here tonight are some very touching stories about people who need housing. People who have housing in Simsbury today are paying more than thirty percent of their income for that housing and they're struggling to make ends meet. We can provide diversity of housing in Simsbury, some alternative choices, ways to help meet housing needs. For people who've lived in Simsbury over fifty years, I'm almost fifty, off and on for fifty. Housing hasn't gotten any more affordable in Simsbury. In fact, since COVID, what's happened with the housing market is housing prices have run away from what people can afford. For people who have housing, they don't understand this situation because they have housing. How come other people don't? Maybe if they worked harder. You know, minimum wage jobs in Simsbury, you can work four minimum wage jobs and still not afford a medium-priced house in our town. And there are people that we rely on for so many services, the fire department. People could volunteer for the fire department, they can't afford to live in town. There are people who work in local restaurants and service businesses who can't afford to live here. They have to come into our community during the day like we're some exotic country or something like that. So it's a really unfortunate situation that we find ourselves in. It's not really Simsbury's problem, it's our country's problem and issue. So I take my hat off to you and the work that you're doing, but I also want to stress we need to recognize the situation that we find ourselves in. And it's, we're not losing anything as a community, but I think we're gaining a lot. So thank you for your efforts and I urge you to continue on this pathway. Based on some of the comments here tonight, you may choose to make some tweaks in the regulations and I applaud you for that. But I think keep your eye on the mission because people need housing and Simsbury's a wonderful place to live. So thank you.
She's been by Hawks Lane, Simsbury, Connecticut. I've lived in town about twenty-four years. I'm also a Realtor in town, so I'm on the people wanting to boomerang bank into town, seniors who are trying to afford and stay in town. So I recognize that there's definitely a need and an urgency for affordable housing. But I really would like you to encourage the zoning commission and anybody else to really put a lot of thought into how you structure it. The oversight is important. Having worked with buyers and sellers who've bought affordable workforce homes in Simsbury, there's a formula that I think you need to educate yourself about. You know, it's great to hear eighty percent of the area median income or sixty percent of the area median income, but when it comes to buying a house, that breaks down to how much can you afford to pay each month for a payment? Okay, our interest rates, when my clients bought were around two and a half, three percent. Now they're seventy percent. So that person who bought a few years ago, when they go to sell that house, if they get transferred out of the area, they can't even sell it for what they bought it for. So they're probably already in a short sale situation and this is somebody who needs affordable housing. So you really need to think about what that means and what it means long-term. And how are you going to oversee it? Because I really feel it's extremely important, having a person who bought a resale. There really was no facility of anybody who was overseeing, you know, is this person really legit? Okay, is this getting it on, is it going to be put back on the deed? And the last thing you want to do before you open up this strategy is to really make sure you've thought it through from not only offering it out there, but also how are you going to manage it in the long haul? Because when I say, how are you going to manage it in the long haul? I think it needs to be, somebody in the town needs to have some sort of oversight on it. The other thing I want to say too is, to me, an R eight zone doesn't mean affordable housing. We've had condos and PUDs go in where sales of about a million dollars for a few of them. Condos selling over five hundred thousand dollars. That's not really affordable to me. So the strategy really needs to figure out, how can you incentivize, you know, incentivize these builders or buyers to be able to keep those prices affordable in the long haul? Having worked new construction projects in town and outside of town, the cost of construction is very expensive. So a builder, if he can get a one, you know, eight homes in one acre, why would he build ten homes on an acre and a half? Okay, because once he builds ten homes, now he has to add the affordable component. So there's really no incentive for him to build more than nine homes. And you're going to think about that, but they probably will take advantage of the R eight zoning. So I think everybody wants affordable housing, but I think you need to really think about how are you going to provide that opportunity to people so people, so we can bring it in because we do need it. These young professionals or elderly and just working-class people, it's really difficult. But please be thoughtful on how you do it and just don't make a rash decision to approve everything in one, you know, one item. And finally, the last thing is really more of a question. Seems like if I were to put a hundred and fifty square foot shed on my yard, I will have to come to zoning for approval. Or if I want to go over my setback by three feet to put on my screen porch, I'll have to come to zoning for approval. But if I want to put, if I have a three thousand square foot home and if it fits within my property, I can put a nine hundred square foot unit in my backyard without ever, my neighbors ever knowing about that. There's just something about that doesn't seem right. So I have no problem with these, you know, units, but please think about, really think about the impact on that and how, you know, two people in a neighborhood, when they bought into a neighborhood, they didn't expect to have a thousand square foot, you know, barn in their backyard that someone's renting out to students or to, you know, a non-family member. And it is really truly ridiculous. Not that I'm against it, but I'm just asking you to really put some thoughtful consideration into what you're doing and what you're proposing and what the long-term effects are. Thank you.
My name is Mark Scully, twenty-nine, Natural Road in West Simsbury. I'm also a member of our sustainability committee and full disclosure, I'm an amateur developer. I want to commend the commission for the process that you've gone through. I think many of us were at some of the meetings, I think award-winning process for updating our P O C D. It was done three years ahead of schedule and it was, it was a great process, right? Many of us were there, we were putting stickers on maps and getting currency and spending it. And I think a lot of people, we took that process seriously. And what I've heard you've done is you went back to that and said, how do we respond to that? How do we respond to what we're hearing, what the public is saying? And that's what you've done and I commend you for that. And I think we all have our own opinions, but I would agree with opinion race and I think these are reasonable and modest changes, right? And I trust that if a few years from now, we find we are getting overrun with ADUs or enough of the R eights for a while, that you will act. I trust that as you have governed well, you will continue to do that. And I would just, and I share the sentiment from my good pastor that so many of these changes will only enrich our community, right? And I think, I think that's a good thing. And I just want to, and I think in particular, it would be great if we can find a way, and it's not easy, to get more affordable housing in town, right? I think that is sorely lacking. It's a complicated issue, but we've got the state barking it out on our back and it's, I think you've looked at a lot of the solutions, it's going to take the town, it's going to take developers, but I commend the effort to get that done. And I want to leave you with one final thought. As you have gone back to the P O C D and said, what does that, how does that guide us for our zoning rules? I encourage you to look at the sustainability section. And as you look at developments coming in, ask the question, is it sustainable? Is it low-impact development? Are we living gently on the earth? Are we using our resources? Why not build to a higher standard, perhaps a zero-ready energy home? So I encourage you to put sustainable, I'm not sure what the mechanism would that be, that would be, but to give, really to hold developers to a standard of not just coming in and providing developments in housing, but also doing it in a way that is sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. I think as I said earlier,
I think, as I said earlier, regardless of how far we went tonight in our discussion, after hearing from the public, we're not going to vote on this issue tonight, we're going to wait till our colleague is back. It's nice to know your service at the next meeting. And so, I think what we're, our intention now is we've had four opportunities for public input. Three opportunities for public input. So, certainly, I think that's enough and that we should close the public hearing. But I'm interested in my colleague's feelings about that. Does anybody want to comment on the question of closing the public hearing?
I would support closing the public hearing.
You're shaking your head, Kate.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. I mean, I was wanting to kind of push to have this last, this part meeting, but I think we've gotten range of opinions and feelings, I think.
Tony, what's your feeling, are you going to close the hearing? Well, I, as I said, I feel that way too. It appears there's a consensus that it's time to close the public hearing. And if a commission member would like to make a motion to that effect, we can go ahead and act on it.
Can we close the public hearing?
In a second, please. So we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Further discussion, then we'll go ahead with a vote. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, so the public hearing portion of our process on these tax amendments is closed. So at this point, there's a variety of rules and regulations about what kind of information can come to us as we deliberate and make a decision. But again, the public process and the public hearing is over. So, I thank everyone who came tonight and for the other two meetings and sharing your thoughts. I've been where you are, and I've been, you know, offered remarks on occasion. We're not particularly well-received, and sometimes we're, and those are ears going by. So, again, thank you. You're welcome to stay, you're welcome to come back for our next meeting. All of our process is, is public. For those who don't realize that, there are no meetings behind closed doors, there's no small group meetings. Our discussions are right here. If you wonder how we ever get it right, you're probably not alone. It's a process, it's a process, and Simsbury's had zoning since the nineteen thirties, and Oh, for those who don't know it, these meetings are broadcast and they're on tape, so you can always turn on a computer and see on one of the YouTube stations, is it YouTube?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
One of the YouTube stations around here. Plus, you can also see it on Simsbury Community TV. And, and there's a long sort of archive of these meetings. Anyway, then, we're going to
I'm sorry, are you going to?
Thank you.
That sounded very rude, and that is not the way I meant it, I just wanted to
I was out of points.
I just wanted to make a comment, if I may?
Sure.
And I, I brought this forward last meeting as well. And while I, I absolutely support that, obviously, the public's right to free speech and their contributions and what everyone has to say. By the same token, I feel compelled to bring out the use of the word "social engineering," the use of the phrase "social engineering." It is reflective of some of the worst heinous regimes in our history. The comparison of the zoning commission to those who are social engineers is not helpful to the process and inappropriate. And I'm sure me saying that is only going to compel more use of that phrase, but I just felt the need to point it out.
Okay.
Yep. That's what I got to say.
Well, George, can you take a few minutes now and walk us through the supplementary memos?
Yeah, so this is not new information. You received three memorandum, and they were posted with in Dropbox as well as in the public file, so these were available. And they are three memorandums, one dated, dated this evening, and two dated December twenty-sixth, and they were just kind of responses to those questions that you asked. There's no advocacy here on staff. And I just wanted to just, just so you could, and I did it in those memorandum of A D U issue. And I'm just going to talk about the A D U issue, the R-eight issue, and then the inclusionary. So, for the A D U issue, it comes down to whether you think an A D, a detached A D U rises to the level of the extended scrutiny and public hearing that you apply to other uses, right? Like, drive-throughs, or bars, or restaurants in some of the business districts. So, there are some places where you have elevated scrutiny, and that's what it, that's what it is. If you keep the special exception, then you equate it to those uses that require elevated scrutiny. It's kind of that simple. If not, then it becomes, you know, a staff review issue for For R-eight, I was asked from the dais on December sixteenth, where these would go? Where, where would it go? Where would these R-eights, R-eights? So, a couple, a couple of things to consider. And again, they're documented in the memorandum. So there's no proposed mapped areas as, as part of the draft text amendment. It's just a, it's just text that says, this is a zone that can be used in the, really in the appropriate locations. But anyone can petition, right? Just like any zone change, and any property owner or developer can ask for any zone change from, from, just had one. I won to B two tonight, as our first item, that was an example of a zone change. That requires a public hearing, it always requires a public hearing. There's no scenario where a zone change would, would not require a public hearing. And then those factors that the commission should use, like you used tonight for an R-eight zone would be, what does the plan of conservation and development say? What do the maps and policies say? Is there infrastructure availability? Water and sewer, but also roads and all those other kinds of things? What's the zoning pattern in the area? Are there, is there, is there a level of compatible zoning? It doesn't need to be identical zoning, it's got to be compatible. And it's up, it's up to the zoning commission to make that distinction. Our P O C D is helpful to you in that there are really, there are two maps in the P O C D. You've got a residential development plan and a future land use plan. And it shows where we anticipate as a community where housing will go. And we really break it up by density. So for instance, we say, the western part of town, we support low-density residential uses. And in the more central part of the community, we support moderate-density residential uses. And then in the more, again, built-up mixed-use areas, we support a higher density of residential uses. So, you know, not to presuppose an, a zoning request, but you get, if you were to get an R-eight request on the western part of town, you look at your, your, your future land use map, and the future land use map is going to say, it's low-density. It's not consistent with what your plan would say. So, we would hope that you'd probably come to some conclusion that says, you know, R-eight doesn't really work here. It doesn't make any sense, because it's surrounded by R forty law, for instance. So, you, you use the P O C D, and you, and, and you look at compatibility of, of the area to make those decisions. It's no different than if somebody were to come in and, 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 and request a rezoning to R fifteen, or to R forty, or to B one, or to B two. You would use exactly those same tools. So the, you know, we, we got a lot of comment from Realtors, from developers, related to the inclusionary zoning. The December sixteenth memo talks specifically about what your potential options might be. I, I think staff certainly has come to the conclusion that, that fifteen percent is a, is a difficult get, particularly at both eighty percent and sixty percent of the marketplace. And perhaps especially related to single-family design, you know? We only have five truly deed-restricted single-family units in town. Maybe a couple or more, but we don't have many. So, you could consider going to ten percent and just at eighty percent, and applying it to multifamily projects, again, above ten percent. I, I think, you had a speaker tonight that identified, you know, the change in, the change in mortgage, you know, the increase in mortgage. That's a real thing for affordability, particularly for single-family, even for the smaller ones. I was going through the formulas that Hendrick Slane used four years ago. And those were all two-point-nine, or two-point-four, or whatever. So, it's, it's virtually impossible. And I do think it's a, I think it's a valid point. Again, the, the challenge of oversight, it's ea, it's easier to provide oversight for rental projects. Those folks send annual reports, annual rent rolls, we get those from Aspen Green, we get those from Willow Arms, we get those from the Ojekian Project, for instance, I mean, they're, they're four billionaires. So we, we get annual reporting from them, so we do have oversight relative to that. So, and then, and then finally, the memo talks about, you, you as a body don't have the ability to provide tax incentives or abatements that is not under your purview, that is for others. So the kinds of, the kinds of, kind of incentives you can offer really revolve around parking reduction, which is a big thing for, 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 you know, a little bit more density, as well as density bonuses. And those can be applied to your, to your overlay zone, where you have that flexibility. So, you have a lot of ability to provide incentives. And we were told by developers that really, you know, abatement and land and that kind of thing, but I don't know that this body can provide. So, again, I just wanted to summarize those memorandum for you that you received in advance of tonight's meeting, but hopefully that clarified all those points you asked.
Could you just go back to the Just a second. I think you got it. Well covered, thank you. So, why don't we take a few more minutes and initiate some discussion if you'd like?
Mr. Chairman, let me just make one more point, just again, in my role, I can, you know, give, just advise, but not advocate. It came up a couple of times, but there is of course no reason you couldn't, you couldn't vote on these individually. Of course you couldn't.
I was going to make that point.
That was my question, Mr. Chairman, is the plan right now for us to vote on these individually, or is it
Well, my, my own thought is that we, we should try to deal with these individually in terms of the vote. A discussion of all four before going back and voting. You don't have to struggle with a vote, as we try to see if we have consensus on each one of these. I think a separate discussion makes sense. You know, if it, if it all fit together, as it doesn't, I mean, we expected when this material was drafted, there's going to be changes. And as public input and our own reactions lead us to a sense that there's opportunity for improvement here, and there are going to be better handled individual testaments rather than one big one. So, here we are on that issue.
Not to like squash any significant discussion that we might want to have, but I guess my thought would be if, if we are delaying the vote in order to have Tucker participate, then I would generally, like, it's, obviously, people might want to say like a quick statement, but I would generally like to hold our discussion till then, so that we don't have to reiterate all the discussion, and he should hear what the board's, the board's discussion is if he is going to be a voting body on the board for that meeting. Would be my thought.
And I agree with Kate, I think we should, we're approaching a two-hour meeting, we're missing an important member of our commission. It suggests we defer discussion to our next meeting.
Somebody want to make a motion to that effect? That was a motion, wasn't it?
I think the motion would be you would move this item to your next regular scheduled meeting.
I mean, you could still move that, move this item to our next regular meeting.
What is that, George?
First one.
Sorry, are we back to Mondays?
No, Monday.
Yes.
Monday, sorry.
Third.
Fed three.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye please, this is a link of the balance of this discussion to the next meeting. And that, that motion to adjourn the meeting was adjourned a meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
adjourn the meeting is all in favor, say aye. Those motions are passed.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one thing, I know you just adjourned, but Connecticut Bar Training, I sent, we sent everybody an email that is available to you. It is on, it's on, it's an all-day Saturday in March, March, March twenty-sixth. So that, that is a, it's a virtual training, they do it every two years, some of you may have taken it already, but that's something we will pay for, so if you want to do that, I'll pay for that training. Remember, you do have required training as members of the zoning commission, many of you have, have completed that. But it is a, it's a good overview, I mean, it's a long day, but it's, it's like Connecticut Land Use 101. It's, it's, it's really good, it's a good
Just a quick question on the training, George. What's the reporting requirement? I don't recall receiving anything from the town about the reporting. I, I did the training.
So the reporting requirement is informal under the state statute. You send, send, send us an email about what you took and when, and we put a, we keep it on a spreadsheet.
Okay, I will, okay.
That's how we do it.
So I will send you my work from last week.
Are you able to tell us whether we've done it or not? Yes, of course I can. Sure, I'll, let me check it out, I'll let you know.
Was this your last year?
Like, remember, so you, you only have to do it once every four years?
Okay, right.
Yeah, four years, once every four years.
For over forty years, S C M has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming, education, and live broadcasts.
S C M isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings.
And celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, S C M faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
S C M receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that S C M remains open.
Continues to educate our youth. And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to S C M, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
S C M is crucial for keeping our community connected.
S C M isn't just here to broadcast local events, they're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us. Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that S C M continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the Q R code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town
Your schools
And your government Come together.